All right, so welcome, everybody. And I'm going to start this meeting at 7 o'clock Wednesday, the 19th. This is Kristin Ferguson, Chair of the Planning Board. And the Planning Board is going to hold in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order of March 12, 2020, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, a virtual public hearing concerning amendments to the Concord zoning bylaw proposed under Articles 32, 34 to 39, and 41 by petition, and to the Concord sign bylaw proposed under Article 42 by petition in the 2020 Town Meeting Warrant. So there are folks on the phone, and I'm going to open the public hearing. For those of you on the phone, we're going to be presenting one article at a time. And then after each article, we will take public comment. So if you have some, you can raise your hand, and then we will unmute you. When we unmute you, please state your name and address, and then you can say your comment. And to remind everybody, as long as I'm correct about this, these are the presentations that people can review afterwards because at the town meeting in September, we won't have presentations. But there will be, my understanding, time to still ask questions and have comment, according to the moderator, and according to moderator's schedule, about each of the articles before voting. So if there still remains comment, note that you have time for that. So let's start with a roll call of Planning Board members. Mr. Bozdet. Ms. McIneney?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Flint?
Present.
Mr. Sayah?
Present.
And did I leave anybody out? All right, so let's start with Article 32 for additional dwelling. Whoop, did I forget something already?
No, did you get Burton Flynn?
Yes, she did.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Um, let's start with additional dwelling unit, Article 32.
Hey, that's me. So let me know. There we go. Great. One second. Okay, thank you. I'm re-presenting the information on Article 32 that was previously provided at the Planning Board Public Hearing on February 25. Next slide, please. Article 32 would replace a section of the zoning bylaw with new language that allows a building permit to be issued for one additional dwelling unit in a single-family dwelling or detached accessory structure subject to certain conditions. Concord zoning bylaw currently allows for the creation of one additional dwelling unit within an existing residence, subject to obtaining a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Passage of Article 32 would replace the existing provision in its entirety with new language that allows for creation of an additional dwelling unit upon issuance of a building permit. A special permit from the ZBA would no longer be required, subject, of course, to certain conditions. Let me take a moment to clarify what is meant by an additional dwelling unit. It's typically a small apartment within or in close proximity to a principal residence. In common parlance, it's an in-law apartment. It's also often called an accessory dwelling unit in addition to being an additional dwelling unit. Next slide, please. The objective of Article 32 is to provide small additional rental dwelling units that will not substantially alter the appearance of the town and help enable owners of single-family dwellings larger than required, the dwellings that are larger than required for their present needs to share space and the burdens of homeownership. These are actually the same goals as stated in the existing additional dwelling unit provision of the zoning code. But Article 32 is intended to make it easier to create an accessory dwelling unit and to provide some greater flexibility in the form of the unit while applying reasonable limitations to help maintain Concord's existing character and appearance. Next slide, please. The current provisions of the zoning code allow accessory dwelling units by special permit and ZBA approval. If the lot is at least 10,000 square feet, the unit is part of a single-family dwelling, not detached. The single-family dwelling is at least two years old. And in fact, the accessory dwelling unit cannot change the exterior of the single-family dwelling as it's existed for the prior two years. The accessory dwelling unit is limited to one-third of the gross floor area of the residence in which it is located, and the special permit is not transferable on the sale of the property. Next slide, please. Under the existing bylaw, here's some information on the additional or accessory dwelling units that exist in Concord today. The Regional Housing Office Survey did a survey, or Regional Housing Office, excuse me, did a survey, received 23 responses. There's more than 23 accessory dwellings in Concord, but got 23 responses. 64% of those are occupied by persons non-related to the homeowners. Only 50% have, or over 50% have only one occupant, and 60% are one-bedroom units or studios, and over half have been in existence for greater than 10 years. So the takeaway, I think, is that these, it's two-thirds rented out, a third occupied by family, they tend to be small, and not a lot have been created over the last decade. Next slide, please. Here are the proposed changes that Article 32 would implement. It would allow units up to 750 square feet by right in all residential districts. And note on, you could get a special permit to go up to 1,000 square feet, and I'll talk about the special permit options in a moment. The unit could be attached or detached, such as in a garage, in a barn, or outbuilding, in a separate cottage. And to emphasize "by right" means that the owner does not have to go through the process of obtaining a special permit from the zoning board, which can be time-consuming and expensive process. They just have to obtain a building permit. Why 750 square feet or less? This helps to find the unit as an accessory to the principal residence and helps maintain the appearance of town while meeting the objective identified as part of Concord's long-range plan to of creating additional smaller affordable housing units. And instead of requiring that the additional unit be carved out of the footprint of an existing residence, the new unit could be in a separate structure. There are a lot of detached garages and barns in Concord, and this article could allow for some reuse of those structures as dwelling units. Given ZBA review would not be required for these applications, subject to the special permit options discussed later, there are some additional express requirements that an applicant for the building permit would need to meet. Next slide, please. First, site requirements. The lot must meet the minimum size for the zoning district. Today, the zoning code just says it must be a minimum of 10,000 square feet, which is the smallest conforming lot in Concord. Other residential districts have larger requirements, so essentially it needs to be on a conforming lot, subject to getting a special permit. There's no more than one unit is allowed per lot. One parking space may be provided for the unit. This is a change from the existing bylaw. Currently, like any other residence, two parking spaces would be required at a minimum, and the property must be served by town sewers or be on an adequate septic system. That's the same from the existing bylaw. Next slide, please. Dimensional requirements are that the unit must occupy no more than 750 square feet, meet the required setbacks for a primary structure, so not an accessory structure, but for the primary structure, and meet primary and accessory structure height requirements. And the total gross floor area of all buildings on the lot must also conform to the maximum area, floor area ratio, excuse me. So in the discussion of the special permit, I'll talk about the two asterisks on this page about exceeding 750 square feet or being in a setback for the primary structure. Next slide, please. The unit must be either occupied by the owner, or the owner must be in the single-family dwelling that's on the same lot. The accessory dwelling unit may not be legally separated or sold apart from the single-family dwelling, so no subdivision or creation of a condominium. I suppose unless the lot was large enough that it could be subdivided into two conforming lots, then neither the single-family dwelling nor the accessory dwelling unit may be used for bed and breakfast. And this was in response to some of the, you know, the growth of short occupancy rentals and other models like that. Next slide, please. In applying for building permit, the applicant must provide a dimensioned floor plan of the additional dwelling unit, a site plan showing the location of the additional dwelling unit as well as the parking configuration. And the unit may not be used until a final certificate of occupancy is issued by the building inspector. Next slide, please. Now, I've gone through everything that's allowed by right. If you, if an applicant desired to go for a special permit, they could increase the unit size from 750 square feet up to a maximum of 1,000 square feet. And if the detached dwelling unit is in the side or rear setback, they could seek a special permit to allow for that. Or if the lot is non-conforming because it doesn't meet the size requirements for lots in that residential district. So on that second point, on the detached, being in the side or rear setback, let's say, for example, there's an existing barn building that's closer to, it's near the property line as is allowed for an accessory structure, but not a dwelling unit. They could turn that into a dwelling unit by obtaining a special permit and going through the Zoning Board of Appeals. Next slide, please. This article is proposed by the Planning Board in response to housing goal number five from the current long-range plan, which, I took a quote, says, "We should encourage renovation of existing single-family homes in all zoning districts and identify the opportunities to create accessory dwelling units within existing structures," emphasis on "structures," "in all zoning districts." And the plan allows, excuse me, the plan includes an action item to amend the two-family or additional dwelling unit bylaw to meet this goal, which is why we're presenting this now. Next slide, please. We took a look at some towns, at some neighboring towns for similar bylaws. Some have allowed the process to proceed by right with just a building permit. Some require special permit, as Concord currently does. Most, well, some allow it by right in detached structures. Some require a special permit. There's not a lot of numbers here to draw conclusions from, but generally speaking, the hope is that by allowing it by right and allowing it in detached structures, it would help us meet that housing goal number five as expressed in the long-range plan. With that, I will conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thanks, Burton. So we will open it up to public comment, to questions, and thank you to everyone who's attending. We hope to see you all at town meeting as well. If you have a question or a comment that you'd like to make, please raise your hand, and we can unmute you. And we know some of the articles will have more discussion than others, so I won't belabor it if there aren't any hands up. I'm just going to give it a few more seconds, just in case people are finding the button. I see, I see a couple of hands, so let me give folks a chance to put their hands up. And then the administrator's going to unmute you. And then please state your name and address, and we'd love to hear from you. I think we're ready for perhaps Ms. Drit.
Hi, Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4. And I was wondering if it would be, if you had a smaller building and you tore down the house and you built a duplex or a two-family, would that be allowed? Or would that be an entirely different thing?
Well, there's another provision of this subsection of the zoning code that refers specifically to two families. You know, a two-family structure could be, I think, I believe, could have separate ownership and the like. But you, the building does not need to be pre-existing to create, the principal building does not need to be pre-existing to create an accessory dwelling unit. So conceivably, yes, you could tear down an existing structure and build a new principal residence and accessory dwelling unit if the building of that principal structure was otherwise allowed by right under the zoning code, subject to getting a building permit. Otherwise, you need a special permit or potentially other forms of zoning relief.
Thank you.
But if I understand correctly, when we were proposing the two-family also, we were, that was distinct from this and the fact that if it was considered two-family, they could be sold individually as condos, whereas that's different from what we're proposing for the accessory dwelling unit, correct?
Yeah, that was my article, but I believe that is one of the distinctions between the zoning code's use of two-family versus an additional dwelling unit.
Yeah, the answer is that, of course, the maximum size of an accessory dwelling, even with special permits, 1,000 square feet gross floor area. So, you know, if you could conceivably create two side-by-side units if they're both under 1,000 square feet, but that would be unusual in Concord.
And there's no way of making-
And they would have to be under common ownership. They wouldn't be able to be separately owned.
There's no way of making one larger than 1,000?
Oh, yes, absolutely. But so you could have a large house, then with an accessory dwelling of 750 square feet by right, brand-new, that you would construct at the same time.
Well, I mean, the accessory dwelling is limited to 1,000 square feet with a special permit, and that won't fit a family. That will fit at most a couple or a single person because you need at least two bedrooms for a family.
That's right. So that's kind of the intent of the, I'm sorry to speak out of turn.
Yeah, that's really the focus here of expanding this accessory dwelling unit is to address the need for housing for empty nesters and the like, who may not have a larger family and are finding that they're living in a large home that's expensive to maintain and pay taxes on, that they want to be able to downsize without having to move out of Concord or sell their principal residence. So that's pretty much the target.
Okay.
We did have a separate two-family article that we postponed just because we felt that it would need further discussion. So hopefully, we'll take that up again next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to unmute the next folks. So Mark and Tanya Galis, you should be able to speak.
I believe they muted Mariah Walsh, but now I'm on.
Sorry.
Hi, I'm Mariah Walsh, 169 Theroe Street. And I just wanted to thank you for the thoughtful article. It's so well-designed, and I think you've taken in all the things that could possibly be a problem. And Burton, you did a great presentation, so that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Moira.
Thank you. Now let's try Mark and Tanya Galis. Apologies.
Hello. Yes, just a simple clarification question. So if our current septic system would not be adequate, and we wanted to take advantage of this option, we would just have to replace the septic system with an adequate one and then proceed without any extra permitting? Is that correct?
Assuming you met the remainder of the requirements that are specified, that's correct. The having an adequate septic system to account for the increased flow and the number of bedrooms in the accessory dwelling unit are one requirement. Certainly, if you're not meeting that requirement, that would be a thing you'd need to solve before you could meet all the other requirements.
But it would be adequate for that requirement to just replace the septic system? And then, of course, the other requirements would need to be met, too. I understand.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think there's one more. There was one more hand. Is there still one more hand?
They put their hand down.
Maybe the question was answered. All right. Well, thank you for the questions. Let's move on to Article 34, which is about the planned residential development. And Matt, you're going to be using your screen.
That's right. So Article 34, our amendments to our zoning bylaw regarding the planned residential development, and also Table 1, Principal Use Regulations pertaining to planned residential developments. And we have amended this warrant article in order to remove one of the aspects that was triggering a lot of debate. We felt in the forum that we have this fall that we would like to have really more consensus types of proposals. And so what we have done here is that now we are continuing with our original proposal to update Table 1 to add planned residential developments to the types of projects that are subject to site plan review. And we also are making changes to Section 10 of the zoning bylaw to align the planned residential development concept better with open space, housing diversity, and sustainability goals that were expressed in the comprehensive long-range plan. But we have removed our proposal, for now, to change the permit granting authority for planned residential developments from the Zoning Board of Appeals in Concord to the Planning Board. Because when we presented this article at the first public hearing in the spring, there were a number of comments that that generated. And so we probably will be bringing that back next year. But for now, we just limited the scope of the article to the items that seem to have a great deal of consensus in town. So let me quickly go through these items. First of all, some background on what the planned residential development bylaw covers. It provides a means by which a developer can get a special permit from the board, meaning the ZBA, and with our recommendation on the Planning Board, for an alternative pattern of residential development. And by alternative, we typically mean an alternate to a subdivision, a traditional subdivision. And the goal of this planned residential development is to encourage the conservation of open space by clustering the units, while at the same time improving the mixture and diversity of housing types versus the kind of uniform, single-family homes that you would get in a subdivision. So that has been a fairly popular element of our bylaw, and indeed, 27 planned residential developments have been developed in Concord since 1977. And the bylaw has had changes at different times since then. So now we are doing that kind of periodic update, bringing the bylaw more in line with the evolution of town goals. So first item, site plan review. It's interesting that our major projects, I'm sorry that my audio, my video seems to be there. I'll go off video for a second. That our major projects typically are subject to site plan review, which means that we look at items such as drainage, parking, the access. And so all of these kinds of elements clearly are relevant to a big residential development project, but we did not yet previously have a formal mechanism for reviewing them besides the elements that are explicitly laid out in Section 10 of the bylaw. So we're bringing that in line now. So just like any institutional or business or industrial project and major projects like hotels and motels, now planned residential developments will also need to fulfill those site plan review requirements, those basic requirements. So that's one element. The next, though, which is getting back to the core goals of the PRD, is to encourage more open space. So right now, Concord only requires about 25% of the tract to be open, common open space, but that's in contrast to nearby towns' PRD bylaws, which require 30% to 40%. And so our proposal is to increase the common open space requirement from 25% to 35% in order to encourage that greater conservation to occur. And also just to bring it more in line with the goals that we have to conserve open space, you know, because most of these PRDs are going to be happening outside of the Village Center districts, just because there are very few sites left in the Village Center districts that would be available for a PRD. So here, you just get a quick chart just showing the trend over time since 2000 of the amount of open space that was offered by the developer as part of their PRD proposal. And you can see a definite trend towards less and less of that open space being offered. And right now, you know, we've had a couple of recent PRD proposals that were right at the 25%. So we'd like to bump that threshold up and get more of a 35% minimum, and we hope that this will further the goals of the bylaw. So the next item is the diversity of housing units. So, you know, as the comprehensive long-range plan points out, we need more workforce housing. We need more small-scale and accessible housing to match the future demographics of our town. So we have an aging population. We have smaller households. And so as a result, we'd like to be able to offer density bonuses if 50% of the units are less than 2,500 gross square feet, and that they also provide just one-car garage. We've been seeing proposals with two-car garages that create a lot more of a built environment, and so we'd like to shrink those if possible. The second is to offer bonuses if 50% of the units are zero-step entry with a master bedroom and a full bathroom on the first floor. In other words, for those that might have mobility or accessibility problems, so making them fully accessible. The next element that is a big theme in recent town goals is sustainability. And so what we've done is we have really tried to reinforce some of the sustainable design goals for PRDs. And so we will include in our evaluations going forward, if this passes, sustainable design practices such as low-impact development for stormwater design, energy-efficient building design and systems, and, you know, reducing impervious surface area, and then greenhouse gas emission reductions, and then sustainable site planning, design, and construction measures. So we would really like to see more sustainable development, and this will give us a mechanism to evaluate that in future PRD proposals. We also want to update the definition of wetlands to be consistent with federal and state authorities. And so now we will exclude all federal, state, or local regulated wetlands from the calculation of upland area. So again, we won't have as many exceptions to this wetlands goal, and so more of the sites would be considered wetland in general. And then the other is that, of course, the references are being updated to reflect that now the Clean Water Act is the prevailing legislation. Then tree bylaw compliance. So we have a tree preservation bylaw. It applies to all the residential properties within, you know, our residential zoning districts, the single-family zoning districts. And we intended for PRDs to also be subject to this, but because Section 10 of the bylaw did not really spell that out, it was ambiguous. And so now we would like to make that explicit. And so then developers would need to include a tree protection and mitigation plan as part of their application. And then another housekeeping affair is aligning the height requirements. Once again, in the residential districts, we have a process for regulating height that includes special permits for relief for maximum height. And again, that was not referenced within Section 10 directly. And so today, it's just a fixed 35 feet, and that creates some complications on certain types of sites. So we would like to align the height regulations for all residential properties. So this, very much like the last bylaw article 32, is really motivated by aligning with our vision, envisioned Concord Comprehensive Long-Range Plan, and both with land use and zoning goal two, to create higher density, mixed use, and walkable and economically diverse neighborhoods, while at the same time preserving and restoring the rural and pastoral qualities of outlying neighborhoods and resilience of natural systems. And then goal three, which is to encourage the production of small-scale, affordable, and workforce housing, again, that's sustainable, resilient, and consistent with tax character. So you can see where we came up with a number of these provisions, and that overall, the work that we're doing here to the PRD bylaw should make this more, drive us towards our town goals more effectively. So that's it, and it's open now for questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just keep becoming a ghost.
Yeah, I see a couple of hands. Matt, do you want to allow them to talk yourself so you can moderate? Or would you like me to?
If I have the wherewithal.
Oh, I can, I can do it. First hand I see is Mr. Kleiman. Let me try to allow you to talk. And then.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Gary Kleiman, 57 Central Street. The two provisions that you mentioned about trying to make the PRD consistent with both the tree by law, as well as allowing wetlands not to be counted as part of the upland area. I'm just trying to figure out how, in terms of the tree by law, there's setback requirements that apply to residential properties, but I'm trying to figure out how setback requirements would be applied in a PRD. Can you just say a word about that? And then?
Yeah.
The upland area, my question, 35% is part of the calculation, you know, 35% of only upland area, is that what you're saying, when you exclude wetlands?
So, I mean, we have a number of calculations around the amount of area that, you know, has to be open space, and that applies to the entire, you know, lot. But then there's also the percentage that is buildable and that is, has to have the wetlands excluded. So there are a number of different ratios that we have, and the size of the property that is the basis for those calculations is, you know, has the wetlands removed from it. So the, the open space requirement, though, is across the entire, the entire parcel, not just those that are not wetlands. As far as the tree preservation by law, I think one of the reasons that the PRD by law didn't originally point this out is that it, in a PRD, you typically have a large tract. And indeed, the tree preservation by law only refers to the trees that are within the setback area. And so as a proportion of the property, the setback area is relatively small. And so there is a great deal of the property that would not be subject to this tree preservation by law. However, I should just say that, you know, the developers do submit a plan to us with that common open space element. And so, you know, we are on, you know, on alert as far as trying to preserve the right spaces within there, and clearly including the trees. So the, the goal here is, first of all, to protect that setback area, but also realize that that's only a limited protection, even relative to the protections that are offered in other residential districts, and that we need to go further with our site plan review and with the, of course, just the overall recommendations for the, the design.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Ms. Scherer to speak up, please.
Hi, Christina Scherer, 97 Highland Street. Thank you very much for that presentation, and looks like it's a really thoughtful proposal, so I appreciate that. I do have a question about the open common space. The difference between 25% and 35% is, you know, arguably relatively small if neighboring towns are going up to 40%. Did you consider going higher and maybe even surpassing some of the neighboring towns to really try to preserve some of our precious open space? I mean, you could consider having incentives that if the developer has more energy efficient units or something, then you might be able to ratchet back the open space a little bit, so use that as a tool. Just, just a comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that we have to be mindful in the PRD that it is an alternate form of development, that the developer always has the fallback of going to a conventional subdivision. So we wanted to balance the kind of changes that we're making to encourage alignment with our goals, with continuing to make it an attractive alternative, you know, economically and flexibility relative to different sites. So I, I think that this was kind of the compromise. Sure, we'd like to preserve as much open space as we could, but we also want to preserve flexibility for different types of sites. I mean, we recently approved a PRD that indeed just had 25% open space, and, and it had unanimity of support, and that's just because of all the other attributes that were there. So that, this is our next attempt. I'm sure it will evolve over time.
Thank you.
Thanks. I see no other hands with, with comments or questions about this article. So let us continue on to article 35, Hammerhead Lot, and I believe that's Ms. McAnaney.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm pulling it up.
All right, thanks. I was wondering if that was just my screen.
You're gonna do it from memory.
I mean, actually, I'm, yeah.
Just, just draw.
A hammerhead lot. There we go. Great, thank you. Article 35 relates to, that's provision under section six, which allows the approval of a hammerhead lot as a buildable lot. And a hammerhead lot is a lot which doesn't have the frontage that otherwise would be required, but it, it's, it could meet other dimensional, other dimensional requirements that's specified in the by law. And the, the change that we're proposing has nothing to do with the, the rules and specifications related to how the lot can be approved under special permit, but rather just transfers the permitting authority over from the zoning board of appeals over to the planning board. And the rationale behind that is that this type of approval is just more routinely, and the considerations are more routinely considered in the, the approvals and permits that the planning board reviews under site plan review, or the other types of special permits that the planning board acts on, is more, it's a more obvious fit than the zoning board of appeals. So we are proposing with, with the ZBA's support to, to move that over to the planning board. And next slide, is that it for me? And are there any questions or comments?
I'll give everybody a moment.
Yeah, and Kristen, I can't see hands, so if you could.
Yeah, not seeing any hands up yet, but I'll give people just another few seconds. And that will give Chris a chance to pull up the next article. All right, I'm seeing, I'm seeing no hands, so I think you did a great job explaining it, that's what that means. Next article, I believe that's Mr. Buzzedet, article 36, Relief from Parking Requirements.
Just waiting for it to come up, I assume?
Yep.
All right, we can just skip to the, skip to the next slide. So, so yeah, article 36, relief from parking requirements. We're, we're just looking to incorporate or, or sort of formalize six criteria for the evaluation of requests for relief from parking requirements that we've been using as sort of our informal criteria since, I believe, June 2016. Next slide, please. So of the six, the first one would be documentation for parking studies and/or transportation industry publications that show parking ratios required in the zoning by law for the proposed use do not align with the current industry standards. So if it's just not, if the applicant feels that it's not appropriate, the current zoning by law is not appropriate for the industry and the use, that the volume of parking needed isn't appropriate, they could use a study from transportation industry to, to express that disagreement. Next slide, please. How the proposed use is beneficial or contributes to other businesses, village center, and neighborhood. Again, it could, it could be just that the business or whoever the applicant is feels that the, the parking requirement is such that it wouldn't necessarily impact the village centers and, you know, given timing of events or whatever the applicant may be bringing. And then the distance and availability of on-street parking, public park facilities, and alternative transportation. Again, we, if, if you've been at a planning board thing where, where relief from parking comes up, distance and availability of on-street parking and public parking facilities, this is something we, we discuss every time, at least as long as I've been on the planning board. So again, this is just sort of formalizing some of these. Next slide, please. Fourth one is the intensity of the use and the number of employees required. Again, looking at a business and saying that it's not going to require a large number of, of employees, or it's an off-hours type business. So we just look at how the intensity of use would impact the need for parking. And then the fifth is looking at alternative provisions for off-street, or offsite parking for employees. Again, if the applicant can come up with a, a alternative means of bringing in employees, we definitely want to look into that and hear about that. And the sixth is the availability for convenient bicycle parking. That's another thing, I'm sure if, if you've been at any of the planning board meetings, you've heard, brought up a lot, is just looking for bicycle access, bicycle parking, and making that available. Next slide, please. Oh, there it is, yep. The six criteria have been used by the planning board since June 2016. A method of, this is again, a method of establishing a more deliberate process for evaluating and granting parking relief, and is used when providing recommendation to the ZBA for that, for that relief. Next slide, please. I guess it's a sort of, so again, just to provide more information based on requests, and again, to incorporate alternative transportation options into the project, which is, you know, tying back to Envision, Envision Concord. Again, always looking for alternative, more stable means of transportation as opposed to using, using car and, and large swaths of, of parking. Next slide, please. Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Give people a moment to raise hands. If you have a question, please click the raise hand button. But I'm not seeing any so far, so we'll give Chris a chance to open up the next article, please, while we're waiting. All right, seeing no questions for article 36. We'll move on to article 37, and I'm happy to talk a little bit about this one. Article 37 is about the Thoreau Depot Business District and Residence C. Next slide, please. So our proposed change is to amend the zoning map by expanding the Thoreau Depot Business zoning district boundary and reducing the Residence C zoning district boundary. And this applies to specific parcels, the parcel on 143 Sudbury Road, 159 Sudbury Road, and then right next to the 159 Sudbury Road, the 148 to 150 Thoreau Street. So, next slide, please. Here's a, here's a map of that area, and as you, you'll know, this is that intersection between Sudbury Road and Thoreau Street where the mobile station is and the Starbucks and dry cleaner building is right there. So we're talking about that, that corner right there. So you'll see the red line is where we're proposing to extend the business district boundary. And you'll see the existing is, is crosshatched in kind of the green, and then the difference is, is right there to the red line. And the, on the upper part of the screen is the mobile station there, and in the, in the bottom quadrant there is where the Sudbury Road is. So this is where the proposed boundary line would go, the red line. Next slide, please. So really, why we're proposing this is because it would allow for a change of traffic pattern at the building that's currently being used for Starbucks. And it would allow creating a one-way entrance into Starbucks and a single traffic lane behind the Starbucks, and then a one-way exit, which would be a little ways down, down Thoreau Street, further away from Sudbury Road. And it was brought to our attention, was made possible through an easement from the MBTA that the building owner obtained. Next slide, please. So it's kind of a small picture on your screen, you might see if you can make it a little larger, and, and these plans are available online. Basically, it's, it's kind of showing the one-way traffic flow and, and how the driveway would go behind the building. And this change is supported by the fire chief and the police chief because this one-way traffic would substantially improve traffic and safety, and that's why it's been brought to our attention and why we're bringing it to the attention of the town. I just want to leave that up there just for a moment, so people can see, this is the existing parking lot, and the traffic goes right behind it. And you'll notice there's a few extra parking spaces here. That's not necessarily to increase the size of the parking lot. It is, there's another aspect to this parking. The owner of the building is going to create, it's going to become mixed use and create apartments above, and so parking spaces will be devoted to those apartments above, and likely another two parking spaces will be used by employees. So it doesn't necessarily expand the parking lot for Starbucks customers or for the business owners' customers, but it should improve that flow of traffic by really allowing people to go just one way. Next slide, please. A little bit about the history and kind of why we're proposing to move the boundary lines. Really, that TB, TDB, that's Thoreau District, Thoreau Depot Business Zoning District, a little bit about that. It was laid out originally in 1928 as an offset from the road right of way, so it wasn't necessarily drawn to line up with property lines at all, or existing uses at the time or for future uses. So certainly in the case of the mobile building where the mobile is now, this, the change will align it with the property line. Next slide, please. So again, to kind of put that in perspective and show it again, the proposal for this article is to amend the business district and Residence C district line at 159 Sudbury Road and 148 Thoreau Street. This is a multi-family home right here, a two-family home. And so we would propose to move the boundary line east, and it would make the property here, 148 to 150 Thoreau Street, that would be smaller, so this would be the new property line here. It would allow one-way traffic flow. And then to the upper part of the screen here, we would also propose, while we're doing this, to amend the business district boundary and Residence C district line at 143 Sudbury Road where the gas station is, and that would line up with the existing property line. So just to remind folks, this is a change to the zoning boundary district. So this has to be approved by a two-thirds vote, just like all of the changes to our zoning bylaws, to two-thirds vote for at town meeting. It doesn't necessarily mean that Starbucks is going to, or the building owner is going to go ahead and put that pathway in. There's some other steps to the process. It would just allow, the changing of the boundary would allow the owner of the building to come before the planning board again and, and propose a change in the, the traffic pattern there. Similarly, if there were to be any other future changes, which is a concern that people have had before, well, what if this boundary line? have had before, well, what if this boundary line, you know, what if somebody wants to move it to here? Any change, just like this one, to the boundary line of the zoning boundary change needs to be approved by two-thirds vote at town meeting. So those are a couple of questions we heard when we presented this the first time. I imagine we have several more questions this time, and we, we look forward to hearing them. So next slide, please, I think it's just the question. So if you would go back maybe to the previous slide, I just wanted to make sure I, we'll leave it up there. And let me open it up to questions from folks that are on the line here. Okay, for a good minute, I see a few hands going up. And so I will unmute you, and ask you to unmute yourself, and then please state your name and your address, and then we'd like to hear from you. Hi, we can hear you.
Hi. The boundary, the proposed boundary line that's moving into the residential area.
I'm sorry, could I interrupt you just for a moment? Could you just state your name and address, please, and then we'd like to hear that.
Sorry. Lynn Duffy, 225 Thoreau Street.
Thanks, go ahead.
What concerns me is that expanding that commercial space behind Starbucks into residential area so that we can create additional traffic. We have lived with the Starbucks traffic for, I don't know, 20 years, and increasing their ability to have more traffic with more traffic on the Thoreau Street, in and out, with pedestrians walking by, still gumming up this intersection, is extremely concerning. Living down the street, it's, it's really just been painful the entire time this Starbucks has been here.
Thank you.
This is not solving problems.
All right, thank you for your comment. I'm going to unmute the next, next person. Thank you. Okay, oops, let's try again. May I ask Ms. Walsh to, if she can unmute herself?
Did I do that right? Hi, I'm Moira Walsh, 169 Thoreau Street. Where do I begin? First of all, Christine, lovely presentation, very thorough, very thoughtful. All of you are amazing in terms of the time and energy you put into these things. And I really love the first two articles, three that were presented. I think they're very much in Concord and Vision, but this one I strongly believe is not. Starbucks has been a thorn in the side of this neighborhood, and we are a neighborhood. We are not just a business district. And it includes Thoreau Gardens, Thoreau Court, Hubbard Street, Devon's Middle, Belknap, Southbridge. This is a neighborhood as well as a business district, and I would like to see as much concern to the neighbors as was given in West Concord and is given in the historic district that is two blocks away. This does not do this. It is a simple solution to a huge problem. Those of us, I've lived here 20 years, and in the, this has been here for about 15. And it, it's not just this, it's the fact that now the mobile station has 16 cars parked there with, they took the hedge away. And so we now have, it looks like a used car lot, in my opinion. Dunkin' Donuts has a nice colonial sound, a sign. A Concord crossing is done in, in the Concord character. This is not about the Concord character. This solves a problem, which is a problem for Starbucks, not for the community. And because we have a whole plan that we're looking at this whole district, I believe moving into a residential district even, and it doesn't solve the problem by moving this driveway 110 feet, because what's happened for 15 years is that people come out of Starbucks and they turn in my driveway, they turn in Silver's driveway, they turn in Duffy's driveway, they turn in every driveway that they can. And it's, it's been horrible. But my major concern, and let me tell you the history of this. When Starbucks first went in there, there had to be a police officer at that corner, at the Starbucks traffic corner, for a long time between the, the business hours, and because they let things go left and right. Now, no decision has been made whether they'll let things go left and right, in my understanding. So when, I'm a systems person, I look at a system and I look at things in a holistic way. That's my training, that's my professional way of looking at things. And this does not do that. I am very, very much against this. Not because I don't, I hate this corner, and I would like Starbucks to move 110 feet into Crosby's Plaza where there's an empty restaurant. And I have gone as far as to contact the president of Starbucks. They are not community, good community neighbors. They just aren't, they're non-responsive. And now we have an 18-wheeler that is parked there every single night between four and six with its engine running, and so people come off of Sudbury Road or down Thoreau Road, and they can't get around it to where they need to go. And I've asked why this is happening and why there isn't something done about it, and I have always gotten a response from Concord officials. It's a wonderful place to live, but this Starbucks, because I think it includes so many different committees, the police, the fire, the zoning, it includes a lot of people. And we all know how dangerous this street is, there have been many fatalities. And so I am really imploring people to put a pause on this and include it in this whole district plan. We've done a lovely job of opening this street to Karma, to 80 Thoreau, but this is an area where people on this side of Concord go to do their daily things. We go to Crosby's, we go to CVS, and we choose to live, people choose to live in this neighborhood because it's supposed to be pedestrian and walker-friendly. It is the best of both worlds. You can go to the, the green and get all the forest you want, but you can also walk to things you like. So I strongly implore people to vote against this, not because I don't want the problem solved. And I am willing to be, I don't like to be just a negative person, I'm willing to be part of the solution. I'm willing to be, to sit with people and come up with creative ideas, but this services Starbucks. It does not service Concord citizens. It's a quick fix to a longstanding problem. And I, I guess, my question is, if you, if this goes ahead, my question is, where is somebody going to put a police officer there? And are we going to get rid of that 18-wheeler? And where's the traffic study? There's been no traffic study, there's been no pedestrian study, and I would like these formal things to be done before we rush ahead and make more of our neighborhood pavement. And you have to remember, Thoreau Street is often the first street the people from all over the world say. They get off the train, I've met so many foreign people who come to Concord and ask, and they'll ask for directions. But my major concern, and I will stop here, is the children. This is like a wonderland of children. It's a street where all parents feel comfortable letting their kids go to Dunkin's or Cumberland's, and they do it with a sense of, of safety. But if they saw what happened around that 18-wheeler or that Starbucks driveway on a daily basis, their hearts would be in their mouths, as mine is. So I strongly, strongly am against this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. And I'd also like to note that we're in receipt of an email from Ms. Walsh from August 16th, so we do have your, your comments on record also. There is another person with their hand up, Ms. Silver, may I ask you to unmute yourself and talk?
Yes, hi. You can hear me? Karen Silver, 164 Thoreau Street. I have expressed my concerns about Article 37 back in February, and again, in an August 6 letter to the Concord Journal. I'd like to just add a further observation tonight, and I've been given to understand, and as was expressed tonight, that safety was one of the most important reasons for the board's support of this project. But as Moira just pointed out, in addition to vehicles, the Thoreau and Sudbury intersection has heavy pedestrian use, including lots of teenagers who walk to and from the high school. And given the tragic death just last week of a pedestrian at Thoreau and Main, I think it would be prudent to give more careful consideration as to whether adding another busy driveway would contribute to the confusion that already exists at Thoreau and, and Sudbury, putting pedestrians at greater risk. The current parking lot entrance is a mess, but at least there's only the one slow-moving driveway for pedestrians to navigate. Given that the Thoreau Depot Business District vision and framework recommendations, as I understand it, are scheduled for presentation to town meeting in 2021, I, I would encourage the board to postpone Article 37 and to take the next year to review the proposed changes encompassed in Article 37, to rev, to review that as part of the total vision for the Thoreau Depot neighborhood as a pedestrian-friendly place. Thank you.
Thank you. I really appreciate those thoughtful comments. I know we have one more, or I had, saw one more hand up, let me see if it's still up. And, and just to, to clarify for anybody who's listening, you know, we're talking about re-envisioning or redevelopment of the Thoreau Depot Business District, the whole district, you know, including Thoreau Street there, and then over by Crosby's Market. So the, right now, just in terms of the timeline, we are in receipt of a memo that's kind of summarizing our vision, and the next steps over the next year or so would be to look at any proposed bylaw changes that we could hopefully bring to town meeting as early as next year's town meeting, but, you know, we'll see. So that's what Ms. Silver was referring to in terms of upcoming changes. So I, I appreciate the, the time that the neighbors in, in the neighborhood have taken to thoughtfully present things for everybody to hear before they make a vote at town meeting. I see no other hands up for this article. So if we could move to the next one, Article 38, which is about fairs, bazaars, antiques, shows, suppers, and dances. I'll be happy to, I'll be happy to take that one also. Next slide, please. And this is, as you can see, this is, this is a brief one also, so. So Section 5.4.5 requires an educational or religious organization or private lodge or club to get a special permit to hold a fair or bizarre antique show, supper, dance, or similar event if they are conducted outside or if they last longer than three days. Next slide, please. But there are many philanthropic, not-for-profit organizations, and those would include museums, historic properties, community and environmental organizations that often hold outdoor events. The zoning bylaw amendment will include philanthropic uses in this section, 5.4.5, and require a special permit for these outdoor events. So this is a fairly minor change, just to make sure that that wording is included, philanthropic, in, in addition to the uses that are, are currently there. Next slide, please. Through the special permit process, butters will be notified before the event. Items such as the number of people, site logistics, and parking can be discussed. Review and comments from town departments are provided as well. And this coordinated review process helps to address and mitigate potential impacts to the community. Next slide, please. So if you want to go up one, basically, right now, the term philanthropic is not included in Section 5.4.5, and we would propose adding that in there. Are there questions or comments about that? Nope, that's a pretty straightforward one. So we've got one more presentation from the planning board before we have some citizen presentations. Article 30, uh, no, Article 39 is about prohibited uses and by, could I ask Mr. Seah to, to tell us about this one, please?
Yes, this is a very simple clarification. It's, it's about private uses, and, and next slide. So this, this falls under principal use regulations that are outlined in the zoning bylaw. And again, it's a very simple clarification on the prohibited uses. Currently, under Section 4.7.1, there's a list of uses and items that are prohibited in the town, that are salvage yard, or open, open-air storage of junk, mobile home park, billboards, slaughterhouses, and trailers. So the trailer, this is about the definition of a trailer. And next slide. So the current bylaw is not intended to prohibit the parking of registered trailers, camper trailers, horse trailers, or other similar trailer on the property. So basically, and the bylaw amendment clarifies the prohibited use is keeping of an unregistered trailer or use of a trailer for habitation on the property. So basically, you can park the trailer, a lawful trailer, if it's registered, but if it's not registered, you cannot park it, and you cannot live in, live in it, basically. That's the prob, that's a, that's the amendment. And next slide? Oh, that's it. So questions and comments?
Short and sweet. I don't see any hands up, but let me give people another moment while Chris pulls up the next presentation. No hands. So if I could ask the petitioner to present Article 41, On-Site Community Notice of the PRD application.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, hello, and thank you for allowing us to take part in this public hearing. So Article 41 is to amend the PRD bylaw to require a sign to be posted by the applicant within five days of the application, so that the neighborhood can be aware early in the process of there is an application, and, and in this way, everyone can participate in the process, and it would be encouraging people, not only the neighborhood, but also all of townspeople, since PRDs really are a very special kind of development, to, to be able to share their opinions, views, to make it the best possible development. By the way, I should say that in the, the slide you, you're looking at states the petition correctly. In the printed version, in the town meeting warrant, it says, in, in the, in the line, the last line, the line right before the last, it says, legally visible instead of legibly visible. Legibly visible is the correct version, and we will make that clear in our motion that we submit to town meeting. We could go into the next slide, please. I think it's, we have a, yeah, thank you. So this is what it will say, to, to allow, to install a sign within five calendar days. Next slide, please. And again, the intent is to inform neighborhood residents and other community Uh, and again, the intent is to inform neighborhood residents and other community members. And, uh, we are also hoping that this sign won't only inform the public, but it will also be, um, be an encouragement that, uh, there is an application, which means they can inquire about that application rather than, uh, choose a more passive approach, which sometimes some, some residents might. I think that's it. Next slide, please, which repeats. Oh, and, and yes, that's, uh, we, we arranged it in, in such a way that it does not interfere in any way, uh, with the planning board's, uh, proposed changes to the PRD bylaw. Uh, we also feel that it actually, uh, supports the intent of the planning board's changes, which is, uh, uh, more community engagement. And, um, I mean, it would, it would apply whether Article thirty-four passes or not. We do hope that Article thirty-four does pass. Thank you for that article. So that's, uh, next slide, please. So that's a summary. So, so, so the way, the, the way this will take place, uh, using the bylaw is that the applicant will, uh, provide a detail of a sign with the application, which will then be installed. This was the town planner's suggestion of how to, uh, how, how to enable, uh, this kind of a petition. I'm not assuming she supports it or anything. I just, and, but thank you very much for suggesting that this would be the mechanism. And, um, so the sign should include the words that a planned residential development special permit application, application is submitted. And the next, please. That's, that's the repetition. So any questions are welcome.
Thank you. And I see it's, um, proposed to go under the ten point four point one section for the application.
That's correct.
As you mentioned.
That's correct, yeah.
All right, let's give folks a few, uh, minute or so to see if anyone has their hands up with questions. Thanks for taking the time to submit the article. I see, I see no hands right now. So why do we plan to move to the next? The next article and the last one on our agenda for this evening, which is Article forty-two, which is a signed bylaw amendment, also by petition. And this would be to amend the Concord sign bylaw.
Correct. This, uh, we would need to have this change in the sign bylaw so that a, a sign that is requested in Article forty-one would in fact be allowable and possible. The sign by law allows certain signs and prohibits others. So we are adding, um, to the, uh, to the signs in Section five that are allowed in every district, a, a sign that, uh, says notice of proposed planned, planned residential development, a temporary sign notifying the public that an application for a planned residential development special permit has been submitted for that site. So, um, that just describes and, and, uh, so this is, uh, as, as the slide says, it, uh, it allows the placement of a sign, announcing that a special permit application for a planned residential development has been submitted for that site. Yes, next slide, please. It is intended to accommodate the sign in Article forty-one. Uh, otherwise Article forty-one would, would not be implement in, it wouldn't be possible to implement it without this permission. And this, this amendment to the sign by law, even if forty-one does not pass, could stay, could still stand on its own in case a similar, a measure similar to Article forty-one may, maybe pass in the future. If forty-one doesn't pass this time. Next, yes. Okay, so that repeats the original article. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments? Please raise your hand. I think there is one hand up right now, please. If you, um, I'm going to unmute you, please state your name and address and then we'd love to hear your question or comment. If you have any more questions, please put your hand, raise your hand so we can unmute you to talk. I think we have Ms. Proctor on the line.
Thank you very much. My name is Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. I just want to thank Tanya and Mark from, for exercising this kind of thoughtful initiative. So often, um, PRDs, uh, uh, appear after a neighborhood is aware of what's happening. And I think this kind of thoughtful initiative, I speak not for the legitimate voters, of which I'm the chair of the town government committee, but only for myself. Um, but I think this is a really helpful and, and, um, positive, um, initiative. And so I just want to thank them very much.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. All right, um, let me give folks a few more seconds to raise your hand if you have thought of anything else. Otherwise, this was all we had on our agenda for the public hearing. If there are no other questions and if there are no other objections, I will close the public hearing and we will see everybody at town meeting. Tell your friends.
Thank you, Kristen.
All right, um, good night, everybody.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.